Okay. Irv, if you're there, we're ready to get started now.
I'm here.
Woo-hoo. Okay. Did they say we could just start? Sorry, Mike. Okay. So seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order a meeting of the Amherst School Committee at 7:59 PM on Wednesday, March 29th. We have one remote participant, so Irv, I'm going to ask that you confirm that you can hear us and then also so we can hear you. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. I can hear you.
And?
I don't know about us, but I can hear you.
Hi, Irv.
Can you hear Irv? Yeah, okay. We're good. Okay, so our first item is approving minutes, of which we have none this evening. I don't know, for folks watching at home, we've had some turnover and absences of our normal clerks, so we expect to be all caught up in minutes within a few weeks or a month.
By our next meeting, yeah.
By our next meeting, okay. Public comment, we have one written comment and no voicemail, so thank you, Mike. And that comment is attached to the agenda item, for those that want to read it again. Moving on with superintendent's update.
Sure. I'll be, thank you, I'll be quite brief tonight. The first thing I'll say, want to share is just congratulations to Allison Estes, who is the successful candidate to replace the very large shoes of Nick Yaffe as Wildwood principal. Nick is as thrilled as anyone, which is a lovely thing, but we really appreciate the amount of community feedback we got when we put her forward, as well as the interview committee that interviewed multiple candidates and recommended putting her forward based on their rankings as the top candidate. So we'll now start a search for an assistant principal, because that was Allison's former role, but it was very exciting to go over there yesterday, yesterday afternoon, let her know the feedback we've received and move forward, and I've got a lot of lovely emails in response from both staff and families. So congratulations to Allison and respectfully, as equally importantly, congratulations to Wildwood School, who has another strong leader coming in. The only other update I would, or, yeah, I guess update I'd like to share is last night, we had a very successful kindergarten registration night, I think I counted 90 people there, ranging from small to large, and it was great. It was, you know, we had all the principals, a lot of the assistant principals of all the schools in Amherst, as well as Pelham, because we do it together. We had our curriculum folks who had bilingual and child-friendly activities, so that kids could be doing that, we had a lot of pizza and drinks and food, so people were able to enjoy that. Mildred Martinez, our elementary registrar, was there helping people work through that process. If anyone needed support, they get to hear from myself, the principals about each school. We did a question and answer session in general, then there was breakout groups where if you wanted to meet Derek Shea, because you were slated to go to Crocker Farm, you had that opportunity. And if you wanted instead to talk to Katie Richardson and myself, mostly Katie, about Comanantes and have questions, they had that opportunity. So it's great, we had a lot of families from our community, we also had a lot of families who were not from our community, who were interested in school choice, who were able to come. So just, I love, you know, it's the class of 2036, which is, you know, just sort of this amazing concept, the high school graduating class of 2036, and just wondering what the world would be like. Hopefully, an improved place than where it is at the moment, perhaps. But, you know, it was just adorable, and there's, my favorite moment is, you know, kids are being four and five-year-olds, right, they're making noises. I'm talking and some of the parents are very lovingly trying to get them to stop doing that. I said, "It's okay, we're all educators, we spend days in school, kids are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and everyone, so they have to relax and enjoy that," and just had the right mix. So, you know, thanks to everyone who came out, our principals, you know, Katie Mildred, curriculum folks, such principals, principals. So that is my update for the evening.
Questions? Just out of curiosity, how would you compare the level of attendance at that to past years? Or pre-pandemic, maybe?
So we only did it once this way, pre-pandemic. You know, like many things, pre-pandemic, it was a little fuzzy, you know, we canceled it. So we did it in 2019, we had it scheduled, it was one of the last events that didn't, or first event that didn't happen in 2020. We did, we didn't do it in 2021, we did do it last year in 2022, and I would say the attendance was pretty similar, but since we only had one of these events pre-pandemic, it's hard to recall. I think it felt similar, that one was also like I had a kid with me at that, one of my own kids, I don't mean, at that one, so I was, I do remember that a bit, and I was talking to him about it last night, actually, when I got home, and I was like, "Did it feel like the cafeteria was full?" Because it felt really full, you know, it was organized how it typically is for lunches, and he said, "Yeah, I think so," but he was remembering more about the pizza and his friends, which is, again, age-appropriate, so it was fine. So it feels pretty similar, you know, and, you know, one of the things that we did a little differently this year is we were more explicit about having these breakout sessions where smaller group conversations could occur, because I think, you know, including staff, when you have over 100 people in a room, the general Q and A is probably good for 10 minutes, and then after that, that's a lot of people not talking and just watching, and so we adjusted the schedule so that there was opportunities for more personal connections to be made, and I think, you know, the quick feedback I got was that was effective.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, chairs update, I do not have an update, so any updates from school committee members? Has the, I'm just curious, has the JCPC started meeting? Has it been meeting?
Yes, the JCPC has met, and we have a draft report that Irv and I both have in our inboxes to review, and it should be coming out shortly.
Thanks. Okay, so we'll move on to our one item on new and continuing business, one major item, building project update, and I just, as we go into this, I don't know that there's a lot of new information about the building project beyond the, there's many community sessions happening, it's a project that we're, I believe, excited about. We've seen so many really amazing videos and presentations from the building committee and the designers showing sort of the fruits of the years-plus of design work, community conversations and planning that we've done as a school committee, and that, really excited about it. And given some of the conversation that's been happening in the public in the last few weeks regarding the vote, we wanted to have the opportunity to come back together. I think Peter, you had actually put this agenda on the item, this item on the agenda. Too many school committee meetings this week. You know, to see if we wanted to, as a committee, come together and endorse the project more formally, given some of the conversations that are happening, so.
Yeah, and I'll give, I'll try to keep this brief, I think probably the majority of it is watching the latest, the last full video, both the inside and the outside. I want to start by saying I'm incredibly enthusiastic about this project. I'm not going to jump into the conversation about endorsing a vote just because of my role as a staff member and not an elected official, so when people see me, be really quiet, it's not because it's a lack of support, it's actually just about the roles, how it's designed in Massachusetts. And so, you know, I designed this mostly where I would loosely narrate the four-minute video, I'm not going to go straight for four minutes, but just to describe what your, what folks are seeing on the screen and some of the benefits we see. I am going to address some of the things of what happens if it doesn't pass, and that's not intended to be negative, it's literally to address things that I've been asked over the last month, or I've seen in the last month. So, you know, I try to balance both my excitement for the project and also wanting to be clear on, from my view, of what happens if it doesn't pass, not as a scare tactic, I know some people may go to that place, but these are real things. I mean, I was going back, it's a bizarre experience, to some of the presentations after the last project failed, and it's not to reenact that, but just, you know, timeline and things, and I think a lot of those things were true, and I feel pretty confident in these tonight, so that's where we are. So this is the front of the building as designed, you can see the front entrance, it's really designed with both safety but light, you could see all that glass paneling on the front, which is both to provide transparency, but also to be a really warm environment. As we go on to the side of the building, I wonder, I guess it's just because of this light, if I take it off, it might be hard for Amherst Media to pick it up, but it makes, the glare makes it hard to see, so I think I'm just going to stay with it.
It looks great over there.
Yeah, 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 that one is much better. Reorganized myself, but I'll pause here just to say what we're looking at behind the trees is the cafeteria. You can see a lot of light flowing through, there's that area right out here where we plan to have benches and tables, so that on nice days, students and families and faculty can be eating outside, we know that that is something that came up more acutely during the pandemic, and is something that we found lots of non-pandemic-related benefits to being outside more often, and so this time of year, it's a little tougher, it's getting a little better, but we do have a significant amount of the school year where eating outside is possible, we certainly proved that a few years ago. And some of these areas, the yellow and the blue, are play areas that, they're intentionally not filled in, because if the project moves forward, we'll have a collaborative process to identify what are play structures we want to have. Again, we have some ideas, but if the project moves forward, we'll get much more specific, a lot of community input on what playground features we might want to have. I think if it's not too rude, I am going to turn my body and narrate from over there if the committee, if that's okay with the committee, because I find it hard to see that one as clearly as it like. So again, there's play areas, behind where our viewpoint is, there's the lovely fields, which will be improved both for school and community use. We're now looking at the classroom wing, you see the three stories, you see lots of windows, lots of light. On the outside, you can see little accent colors to add a little bit of whimsy, what we find is too much whimsy doesn't age well, so we just want to have the right amount of whimsy, remembering that's an elementary school. We also have some hardtop play areas that can be used for basketball, you can see the hoops both by the community and the school, but also can be used for other sports as well. Now you're getting a little bit of a profile of the building coming around the back end of it, and you can see that staircase, which brings in a tremendous amount of light, not just to the staircase, but actually to the hallway that it's off of. You can see some of the outdoor garden areas, outdoor classroom and continuation of our garden program with much better, much improved spaces for use. You can also see kind of below that orange bar where the kindergarten classrooms, the classrooms are organized where kindergarten first grade are on the first floor, second and third grade are on the second floor, and fourth and fifth on the third floor, to build that community and that classroom connection. So if you're not in your friend's class, you'll still see them quite often. You're now looking at the bus and van zone, one of the changes for traffic is that buses and vans will come in a unique entrance and leave a unique entrance, to not have buses and vans and cars all traveling together, that's a safety recommendation we've made. You can see some of the PVs, I'm going to pause, I can't speak as quickly as the video's going. I'm not an architect, so they're probably better at it. This is the gymnasium, and one of the things that we noticed when we visited some other schools is that the gyms, on a nice day, you'd actually don't even need the lights on, which is wildly different than our gyms, which are very, very dark and don't allow a notch natural light, and that's true even at our middle school, high school, that's not a unique to the elementary schools in our district, and it brings out so much, so much of a different space. Gyms have a reputation of being dark and drab, and this is quite the opposite. You can see how the cars and the buses and vans are separated here. We're now going to go inside, you can see the office and the kind of the safety, safety conscience entrance, lots of glass, lots of light, you know, but also lots of color in the building. We want to remember this is an elementary school, and not just physically scaled, but from a color perspective, we want to have it scaled to be a warm place when you walk in, these are young children. You can see the gymnasium, one of the things that we felt strongly about is the signage being done bilingualy was critically important, not just for our Comanantes program, but for all of our bilingual students, to see at least more than one language on critical spaces, as well as families who are coming into these wings that may be for non-school events, because these are going to be great spaces. You see the cafeteria was, we just passed, where this is the entrance out of the front door, music room is in our right, and again, the office is on the left. We're now in the classroom wing, one of the things that you're looking at now is breakout spaces to provide multiple instructional spaces for the classroom. Also, these are shared between classrooms, so it could lead to cross-class activities and project areas. You can see lockers are outside the room to maximize the usable space within the classroom environment, and these are not lockers that lock, these are lockers just for students to put their things and keep it organized. If you've been to Wildwood and Fort River and you look at the Cubbies outside, when you have open spaces like that and that many young children, you can, it's predictable what happens. This is a look inside the classroom, again, you see the tremendous amount of natural light, the multiple teaching spaces in the front and the back, and the built-in storage there in the back, and how it opens up to the project spaces, so teachers or adults in the room can see the project spaces as well as the spaces in the classroom. And you can see the whiteboard and that there truly can be instructional spaces. When I visited a school in Springfield that was, you know, during the school day where students were actively there, these were in use everywhere we went, a building that was designed by the same architects. And I think our final trip on this tour is to the library, you can see incredibly bright space with gorgeous view out the back towards the fields, the improved fields. So we know our libraries serve multiple purposes, they're both instructional spaces, they store lots of volumes that our students take out routinely, you can see a checkout area, and students also go through for specials. So we're really looking forward to having improvement in terms of that space. So that was a little bit of a tour guide, I used to do that as my work study in college, it's a long time ago, but hopefully that gave a slice of the school. But I think to summarize my view, it improves the learning environment, improves the physical environment for our students, for our staff, and for the community. It provides incredible resources in terms of improved fields, but also a cafeteria, I'm like, you know, we visited a school in another community, it's a very similar cafeteria as here, it's used all the time by community groups, because the acoustics are sorted out, there's permanent seats that are there, and the stage, you know, and we're not thinking about a tall stage like at the high school, but the stage is really accessible for all sides, all types of community performances, and the rest of the building can be locked off. So as in terms of our current model, we can't really do that, right? We sort of open the school and the school is more or less open. This allows for the spaces that the community would use to be organized as such, and I think the last thing I'll say before I go on to the rest of the presentation, unless there's questions on this part, is just the accessibility for all students is dramatically different. We don't, we have real walls between classrooms, the building itself is accessible, there's an elevator, you know, that can do that, but really, it's that students can, you know, their special ed spaces are integrated into classroom spaces. Right now, if you think about our specialized programs at Wildwood and Fort River, because of the nature of the building and the infrastructure, they aren't as integrated as we'd like. And frankly, if we built a new school and tried to even do that, Desi would say, "No." Recently, Desi's looked at our special education program and said, "This looks, this looks good, this is consistent with what we want to have." So I'm really looking forward to both our ELL, our special needs and other rooms being integrated and having that flexibility where students can be back and forth without going down a long hallway to a specific space that's really organized around special needs, but the special needs program is actually with the classrooms. And so it sounds like a small point, unless you've seen how it feels to be a student who leaves the room to walk down very far away to, you know, what often is an isolated space in our schools because of the infrastructure challenges we have. So I can pause, or I can just keep rolling. I will keep rolling.
Keep going. I love seeing the video again, though, thank you.
And this is on Board Doc, so anyone can watch it and at their own pace without me narrating, which might be more pleasant. So I did want to talk about some of the maintenance capital impacts, financial impacts, and environmental impacts of the project. So we've been deferring a lot of capital projects at these schools in hopes that this would, this project would resolve them. So both roofs need to be replaced in the next couple of years, we have windows that don't insulate and are not in great condition. Wildwood, one of the challenges of doing work there, and those of you who follow this, you know, when we're doing rugs, we have to, anytime we touch the ceiling, because of the age of the building and the types of materials that are used at that vintage, so to speak, we have to mitigate the asbestos. We still have a wall problem, we've mitigated it to a certain extent at Fort River, a little better than Wildwood because of that, but, you know, we would, if we're going to be in these buildings for another 25 years, we're going to have to do something real about the walls. Our outdoor play areas are aging, I was a young teacher at Fort River when their PGO thankfully did a lot of work, similar time Wildwood's playground was done, credible community work, and now they're 20 years old, and there's a real need to upgrade outdoor play areas. We are renting a chiller and cooling system at Fort River, we hope to do that for, you know, it's coming in May again, for two more cycles after that, but that's not a permanent solution, if we're going to stay in the building, we need to do something different. Building controls around humidity, we would really need to upgrade those, we've done some of that, but we need to do a larger scale, the HVAC system, the univents are 50 years old, they would need to be replaced, and some of that's around the moisture and humidity, you know, it's hard when Fort River is where it is, and you can't really lift the building easily about the water vapor and the water below. So the concern isn't just those projects, it's that there's real needs at the other schools, two of them aren't in this district, but I'll mention that Crocker Farm has very real needs, that renovation is now over 20 years old, and there's a finite amount of capital funds that are available, so all of these cost money if the project doesn't pass, and it would have an impact at Crocker Farm as well about not being able to, you know, dedicate resources there. You know, just one thing I want to address, so I've gotten some feedback recently that, you know, isn't there a lot of like historic value, or we built these buildings better a long time ago when you build things now, right? There's this kind of like popular thinking around that, about things were built better in the past, and I just think, I don't know whether to assess that as being true, not true, but what I do know is these buildings were built, designed and built poorly, and not on the expensive side, I'll just say. So, you know, when we have people in who look at them, they're like, not like, "Oh, this is a classic building, it's too bad these things need to be updated," but, you know, the guts are fabulous of these buildings, that was not the design of these buildings, really through the maintenance department doing a fabulous job that's maintained them to this point. The other challenge of renovating buildings on this kind of scale is that kids are in them 80% of the year, and so what it means is all the work you're doing takes a long time, and I'll give you examples, it took us three or four years to replace the rugs at Wildwood with, you know, vinyl flooring, because it's only closed in the summer, you have to mitigate asbestos, and you just can't, you don't have enough time to do all the things you'd want to do, and so we think about, well, couldn't you just do this, these things over time, you have to do them very piecemeal over time because they're occupied, and that's just one of the challenges. So I'm not going to spend more time in the, you know, read these slides, but just wanted to, thought it was important to note some of the pieces. Again, I'm not going to read the town manager's quote, but, you know, he's really clear that a failed project puts more, more challenge and more stress on the operating budget for the schools, because all of these things will need to now come. The idea of a debt exclusion is that it's an additional tax burden, the community chooses whether to either accept or not accept, but it doesn't hit the capital or operational budget. The other projects, there is no debt exclusion for, you know, some of these other capital improvements, and so, you know, he's a town manager, I take his word really seriously about the impact. There's also not state support to make those other changes, state's paying whatever it is, 40% of this project, you know, more or less, that's a lot of money. And so we also have a lot of operational savings that come from this project, right? We have a net zero building, we have 60,000 square feet less of interior space to clean, to heat, to cool, so we're going from two buildings to one, and the natural, you know, efficiencies that come from that, and that, I mean, our maintenance department every day is fixing things that go wrong at these schools, you know, and so that's not going to get better, and that's going to eat away at a larger, larger part of our budget, not even the capital projects, but just the day-to-day maintenance of things. And, yeah, I'll leave it there, because I'm trying to be brief. Just environmentally, it's a net zero school, as I mentioned, this is the current Fort River and Wildwood, 25,000 gallons of heating fuel, 21,000, over 21,000 gallons of natural gas, so that's a lot of carbon that's being eaten up and that would continue to be eaten up. I mentioned the square footage, and I think it's really important, again, the fields, not just for school use, but for community use, especially like this time of year, it's hard to find really good fields when the snow's melted, but it's still wet, and so the upgraded fields part of this is a benefit, not again, just for the schools, but for the larger community. And I tried to be brief, hopefully I was successful.
Always, thanks.
But I'm happy to answer any questions before you turn to the other part of this topic.
Questions? No questions. I, it's not really a question, but I, you know, what I heard you talking about was, and so I just want to say it in a slightly different way, see you nod, but also, which is, right now, you were saying that our facilities teams are spending every single day fixing something there, so that's not capital spending, I mean, there might be some capital, that's, that's operations, that's staff time, it's staff pay, that is, it's an opportunity cost, they could be doing something else, but instead they're doing this. So is, is that, that what you're getting at is the time and obviously equipment and materials that they need to make those fixes?
Exactly, yeah.
But, yeah, okay.
And it's the uncertainty, I mean, there's at least three or four times a year that one of those two buildings, I'm on the phone with Doug Pyon, thank goodness for Doug Pyon, and Rupert, saying, "I think we're going to have electricity today, I think we're going to have heat today, I think we have cooling," and somehow people, they're amazing, like I've said it before at this meeting, that if Doug Pyon, when he retires, like, that's going to be a really hard moment for the district, he's someone who works in facilities, and, you know, I think one of our former facilities directors said he could fix things with duct tape, like he's a magician, you know? And he's not going to be around forever working for us, and at some point, the duct tape's not going to work, right? Like, his ability to fix things is, you know, seems infinite, but it's not. And, you know, all the work that goes into that, all the custodial time and including custodial overtime, when a bathroom is down for a couple of days and then students are rerouted, right? It all sort of cumulatively adds up, where there's a daily toll on the custodial staff and the maintenance staff of those buildings, that's very real, and it has an impact on not just them, but then all the other things they don't get to, because they're dealing with kind of this constant stream of issues.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, I'm not really a question, just, I appreciate how you framed it with the balance between the, what happens if this, all the benefits that occur if this vote succeeds and the serious consequences if it fails. I, I mean, I think there's, there's a natural complexity sometimes, I think, in trying to communicate all of that to the public at the same time, and you don't want to paint too rosy of a picture, you also don't want to paint too dyed, it's, so I think, I like how you combine that, I think both things are true, right? If this passes, it's going to be an absolutely tremendous resource for the community, and it will transform our schools, that's not an exaggeration. And in all of our schools, I, so that was the other thing I wanted to say, is that, you know, this is as much a vote for Crocker Farm as it is for Fort River and Wildwood. Once we, once we get past the having to keep those buildings online, you know, from now until hopefully Fall of '26, right? Then, then we don't have to worry that some massive expense might be just around the corner. That will really free up a serious capital improvement plan for Crocker, which is really difficult to commit to right now, because you don't know if you're going to have a six-figure or larger massive project at one of these schools unexpectedly, so I'm really hopeful for that. I think it will really stand in contrast to another committee that we sit on, whose buildings maybe don't have as bright of a, of a future right around the corner in terms of capital investment, but I think that will be really, really great for the, for the community, so, so just, yeah, so thank you for highlighting both the pluses and the, you know, it's the cause and effect consequences of the decision that's in front of us. Thank you.
Do you have a question? Jennifer?
I'd like to make a motion.
Great.
I move that the Amher-
I move that the Amherst School Committee formally endorses the elementary school building project and encourages all voters to support the debt exclusion vote on Tuesday, May 2nd.
Second.
May I speak to the motion?
Yes.
So I'm super excited about this building project. I think it's going to be so valuable for our students and for our community. I'm excited about the outdoor space and the athletic fields. I think they're going to be great for our students as well as for broader use in the community. I'm super excited that this is going to be Amherst's first net zero building. And I think this is going to be a model that other municipalities, as well as other Amherst buildings, will be able to use. And I'm also excited that this, that this school building is going to keep K through five in one building, as well as house the Comananté's program. I think it's just an overall a very exciting development for us, and I encourage everyone to vote in favor of it. I got my vote yes yard sign at my house today, and I signed up to do some door knocking in April. So I am all in. I'm super excited.
Great. Peter?
I'm all super excited. It's, it's, it's really surreal. It's really amazing to be, I mean, it's almost six years to the day that the previous project failed, and our town, this committee and our town has been through a lot to get to this, to this stage. And, you know, I said I would keep it under 20 minutes. I won't go through everything that we've been through in the last six, six years. But, you know, there was a lot of, of dissension. There was a lot of disagreement about the last project, you know? Genuine disagreement about people wanting to do the right thing for the town and the schools and not all agreeing on the path forward. And, you know, we applied to the MSBA multiple times. And, you know, it wasn't until, you know, you know, Dr. Morris, he proposed a compromise proposal, and it really was a compromise about those, the issues that were dividing. And we wouldn't, I guess the point I was trying to make there first is that, you know, the fact that we're here now feels like it was always meant to be, but this, it was not inevitable that we got here. It took a lot of work, not, not just, you know, Dr. Morris, for you to propose a solution forward, but for, you know, at those, the public forums, for people to come and say, you know what, this isn't my ideal solution, but this is something I can support. I see that the, that the town needs it. And for people all across the, for lack of a better term, Amherst political spectrum to be supporting this publicly right now, I think is, is amazing. There's people, you know, who participated and led different groups during the last project who are now in unity, supporting this project. And that's just amazing to see. I mean, I'm sure that our lively community will have many disagreements going forward, but I think this is a really uncommon opportunity for our community to come together for something that is such a clear and positive good. So, yeah, I mean, there's a lot more I could say. It's strange to be saying this to an empty room. I mean, I know it's Zoom time and people have other things to do. And I, you know, I guess the last thing I'll say is that, you know, I also have the yes sign on my lawn, and I'm hoping to be hitting the canvas street as well. Thank you very much, by the way, to all the parent and other community volunteers involved in the yes campaign who are trying to organize this effort. I guess the last thing I would emphasize is that it's, you know, this isn't a done deal yet. And, you know, practically speaking, the vast majority of people who are going to cast votes on May 2nd aren't going to be writing letters in the Gazette or making public comment, right? They, and so we don't, you don't really know. And, and property taxes are a real and legitimate concern for many residents. And so there's a lot of work to be done. But, you know, I'm hopeful that this is, this is something where we can, even if we have disagreements about, about other currently active topics, this is something that we can sort of hit a pause button and come together on that. I, you know, I think it's wonderful that we have a school committee with, with, with people who were on different sides of the last project now, who are able to represent the community and express support for the project. I really appreciate what Jennifer had to say, and I'm very excited to support the project tonight.
Irv, did you want to say anything?
Yes, I agree with everything Peter said, and I'm really happy that Jennifer put this forward.
Thanks. I'm just going to go plus one, plus one, in the interest of time. You both have said, said it all, I think, very well. You know, I joined, I joined, ran, whatever, got elected, decided to join the committee because of the failed project vote, the previous one. And so it's, it's just really, it's been a lot of hard work to get us here, and we're not there yet. But I do, I'm super excited, just like everybody here who's spoken already, to vote yes on May 2nd. And we'll do everything I can to help, help that, so. With that, I'd amount to seeing, I'm looking to see if anybody wants to add anything. Nope. So then we'll take a vote. I think we have to take real call because we have one remote. So I will start with you, Irv.
Yes, I mean, as a person who was on that building committee before, and it was one of the most incredibly painful episodes in my life, I'm really glad to vote in favor of this.
Peter?
A dumbling eye.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Allison, yes. The motion passes unanimously for, four to zero. Thanks. Mike?
I didn't know if there was any, this is still on that topic. If there was any communication that you'd like to do about that? All I'm going to say, you don't have to, I'm just, we're happy to assist if there's any communication of the vote that you all just took to the town council or whatever, you know, just let, let us know on the staff side how we can help.
Okay. Yeah, I think, did you have?
It just seems a simple, natural opportunity for visibility. If, you know, Chair wants to share that, a couple of quotes of, you know, the themes that we had tonight, send that out to press just to, you know, keep that going, encourage other people and boards. We forgot to mention, I forgot to mention, the legal women voters has already come out in support. I wanted to thank them for their, for their support. There's other individuals and groups who have as well. And, yeah, to sort of keep it going would be great.
Yeah. So I will, I will draft something. I will also wait till the recording is up, so then I can grab some quotes from each of you and Irv, just so that all of our voices are in that letter. And send that. I'll also send it to the Gazette. Great. Future agenda planning. So as I had, I think, indicated, the regional school committee negotiating team is now going to be meeting and mediation at next mediation session on the 11th. Chose that versus the alternative, which was, I think, two, almost two weeks later than that. So I took the liberty of assuming that we all would be okay with rescheduling that, our meeting on the 11th. Did you have, so I think we talked about, and I know, so there's, there's some options. It's challenging because then the April vacation is the week after that. I think the 10th was out. We couldn't do that. So I think looking at the week after April vacation would be, so the regional school committee is meeting on the Tuesday. We could meet on the Thursday, I think, if that, if that worked for folks' schedules, which I think is the 27th. Peter?
There's a policy subcommittee meeting, but I'm sure we can work around that. We'll defer to the, the larger committee.
Okay. Mike?
And the two topics I have for that meeting are a sort of curriculum update about math and dyslexia screener, and then the charter choice out student retention analysis from, that was suggested at the last meeting. If there's other topics, certainly, you know, Allison and myself know, but those are the two that I have.
Peter?
Is that the retention recruitment item you just mentioned, Mike? Is that, is that going to be a separate item for the two committees? Or is that a, we had talked about it maybe being a joint item, but schedule-wise, is that too complicated? I mean, there's different issues, I suppose, at different, different districts.
I see it as different enough, and I think if it got to...
I mean, I wouldn't mind it talked about twice.
Yeah. I think it, the, the challenges we had the last time and sort of the confusion in the public and, and just communicating it as, as two separate meetings that were happening, just happened to be happening at the same time. If it, if it comes to the point that we're, we have to make a decision and, or, or like with the sixth grade to the middle school, where it can be challenging to sort of take one hat off for us and, and put the other on, I'd almost say, let's start, if folks are okay, separate. And then if it gets to the point that we want to do something jointly together or propose doing something jointly with the regional school committee, then we can bring that in as a joint topic. Does that work? It's not really a future agenda planning, but I neglected to mention during the updates that the budget coordinating group is meeting on Friday afternoon this week. You look like you didn't know.
No, I'm just looking at the calendar. Yeah, 2:00.
2:00 on Friday afternoon, there will be a public comment as, that I saw in the agenda. And the, it, there is going to be some update, I believe, that, you know, talking about the additional half percent that was given. And I'm certain that a topic of conversation will be our budget that we voted that was higher than that. So that is, that is what's happening on Friday. And again, 2:00, it's on Zoom, and there will be a public comment at the end of the meeting. Warrants, I have a couple. I believe. When was our last meeting? What was the date? Does it? I haven't deleted it.
March 14th?
Okay. So I will start with March 19th. Thank you. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of $113,004.98 for a warrant dated March 3rd, 2023. This includes general fund expenses of $55,560.89, revolving fund expenses of $20,778.52, grant fund expenses of $25,781.44, other funds of $10,759.13, and gifts in the amount of $125. And I signed that on March 19th. I signed, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $113,000, this looks very much the same, $4.98 for a warrant dated March 3rd. It is the same. Apparently I timed it twice, March 22nd. I, Allison McDonald, authorized payable, payroll in the amount of negative $22.67 dated February 8th, 2023. And I signed that on March 27th, 2023. And that is all. We don't have any gifts to accept, so I will move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Oh. Did you, did you have something, Irv? Oh, do we have to? Okay. We are adjourned.